If the Regional Planning Commission wants to go forward with some kind of initiative, well, thanks but no thanks, but we're not giving you our blessing, we're not giving away our authority to you so you can regulate above us. As elected representatives, I don't see how you could even begin to say, "Yeah, that's okay, we're gonna vote and we're gonna just let you take it and you do what you want and tell us what we're gonna do when you're done." I don't think that's how it works. And I urge you to strongly vote this down. This is another one of those scams where you're getting told just a little bit of information to make it sound beautiful, and the rose-colored glasses may be passed around right before you get that, but believe me, there is a lot, a lot more to this. I've been doing some research. I'm very disappointed that Mr. Kaczynski couldn't get anything from the planning department when he went there at least two times to ask for information after it was announced at a meeting that this was coming forward. That does a major disservice to the citizens of Rochester. So do a service to them and vote this thing down.
My name is Derek Kittredge. There's an old saying, "Beware of government geeks bearing gifts." It's what's on the inside that really gets to bite ya. Troy found out, and all across America we've had government bureaucrats come in with regulations without representation. Moreover, we are not a home-rule state. I do not know how you can sign this document without the approval of the general court. Perhaps Mr. Wensley could tell me. But I think, looking at the intelligent faces in front of me, that you're too smart to sign onto something that is going to make you all irrelevant. Thank you very much.
My name is Rick Herbert, and I also am from Dover, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. You are all elected to represent the people of Rochester, and I dare say that you are doing your best to do that. And in doing so, you're to represent the will of the people. Tonight, for this initiative, this cancerous initiative, you see no one, absolutely no one, supporting this. And as representatives, I would wish that you would represent the will of the people who have come out and spoken to you on this issue and voted down tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Hines.
Can somebody speak one more time?
No, we only allow one sometimes. Thank you. All right, seeing you on the individual wishing to address the council, I will close the public input on this, and we will move to this panel on the agenda, which was tabled. All right, so we had, I believe, I don't think we formally tabled it, I believe we asked for more information from Mr. Orban, who has provided it. So at this time, with the pleasure of the council for item A, Sustainable Communities' Letter of Authorization, Councilor Lumbour.
I'm not exactly ready to say no, but I'd like to do it after the budget period, when we have some time to study it, to get further information. So I guess we could either take it or...
Postpone.
Postpone.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to postpone. Do you want to just postpone it definitely, or do you want to give it a July?
August.
August. Motion has been made and seconded to postpone this item until August 2nd. All right, motion made and seconded to postpone until August, time certain, so discussion, Councilor Keats? Yes, motion, Erby, second.
Is there any timeframe now?
Ken, the question is, is there any timeframe by which we would need to commit or not?
Not specifically. The process will move along whether Rochester participates or not. It would seem to me it is better for us to be participating sooner rather than later if we want our voices heard. But if we don't sign it, the process still moves along.
Question, Ken, if I could follow up. Okay, sure. Question is, out of all the communities that were listed on this letter of support, have it created all the regional planning commissions in those communities? Have the majority of them, or what's the sense of how many have formally signed on, how many can't vote to the answer, or how many are still?
All of the communities in Stratford County who sent in a letter of support for the grant application have submitted letters or have signed their agreements, except for Rochester.
Can we make an amendment to kill this proposal this evening and delay this process?
You can, from a parliamentary standpoint, vote down the motion to postpone, and then you can make a motion to not approve or...
And I hope people have hears of that, because anybody that climbs on board with this, there's something wrong, something wrong with their thinking. I understand why regional planners go on to this. Look at the people that are on board with this.
There we go. Motion on the floor right now is to postpone until August. Any further discussion on this, Councilor Lumbour?
May I ask, Ken? Is this, this was conceived by HUD, I guess. Is this in all states in the United States?
Yes, funding, the, there was a notice of funding availability, the NOFA that was referenced earlier, and various communities, regions, states throughout the country applied competitively. In fact, this same grant application was submitted in 2010, did not score enough to be funded, was re-submitted in 2011 with some additional tweakings, and was successfully funded. So it's a competitive grant, it's not available for everybody. Applications had to meet certain thresholds in order to be considered for funding.
So National's application is what got this into the national?
The nine regional planning commissions are the applicant. There was reference to Rochester being an applicant, and that's simply not the case. Rochester is a member of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. We are being asked to work with the Regional Planning Commission on this thing, but the applicant was the nine regional planning commissions, the National Regional Planning Commission was the one that took the lead.
Could I ask one more question? Where does the HUD funding that goes along with this actually go? Does it go for regional planning commission jobs? I mean, what, or does it go to outside consultants? I mean, where's the money going that's coming into the state as a result of this competitive grant being received?
It's to a variety of sources, but it does go to the regional planning commissions to implement the grant as it was applied for. So the, there was some, mentioned earlier that there are contractors that are hired to do certain things, there will be employees of the regional planning commissions that do certain things, and that's what the funding is utilized for.
So Rochester doesn't just say, "We don't lose any money if we're not getting any money"?
That's correct. The, just as, Mr. Mayor, just to put it in context, because I think there's a lot of information that's been shared this evening that simply is not correct. The regional planning commissions, by state statute, are required to produce regional plans. Those regional plans, historically, have been produced utilizing the dues that member communities pay to regional planning commissions. The vast majority of the funding that comes to regional planning commissions, most recently comes through the Department of Transportation. And so the creation of, and the updating of the regional plan is something that gets a bit of short shrift. The intent of this application was to make sure that regional plans that are created, rather than being created by planners sitting in their offices, is a much more participatory process, that we look for underserved populations, and there was an allusion to the fact that that's a code for something. There are many underserved populations in our community, some, in some parts of New Hampshire, that may have to do with nationality, color, or race. In other parts, it has to do with age or gender, or people with special needs. So the intent is to make sure that, to the extent that there are regional plans to begin with, that the people who are going to, who live in the communities, have a chance to participate in that process. And so what we are, the intent on the regional planning commissions is to make sure that the regional plans more effectively and more appropriately represent the interests and needs of its member communities and the members who live in those member communities. And then the other part of it is to make sure that the plans that are produced by the nine regional planning commissions also talk to each other, that there's some consistency on a statewide basis, so that we don't have regional silos with each individual region coming up with its own plan that doesn't necessarily relate at all to other plans throughout the state.
Go ahead, Councilor Keats. Again, motion on the floor right now is to postpone till August workshop. Correct? Any further discussion? No, I'm sorry, Councilor Lumbour, my turn.
I have a question for Mr. Orban. According to the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Board website, the original goal was to establish objectives and policies governing transportation, planning, and the region. Contract that we're supposed to be considering here involves housing, transportation, water, infrastructure, natural resources, economic development, cultural and historic resources, public health, climate change, and energy efficiency.
That's correct. That's what the plan is...
Isn't this a bit of an expansion of the original intent?
No.
And doesn't this go into some of the areas that are germane to the city itself and to our own city council?
The regional plans that are supposed to be produced by the regional planning commissions already take those issues into consideration. This is an effort to make those plans more representative of what population, the people, would like to see. So those, this is not creating something new that hasn't been done before. It's trying to make sure that it is more representative of the people. It's our regional plan, so we gotta be participating in it in an active and proactive way.
I've heard several times tonight, "Sustainable communities," or "sustainable development." In a very brief way, the notice is difficult, can you define what sustainable development?
Sustainable development is development that occurs in a way that doesn't utilize unnecessarily our resources.
I don't understand what resources...
If a community, if a community, let's compare it to a budget. If a community continually spends more than it gets in revenue, that's not sustainable. If we are developing land, or transportation systems, or water systems, or sewer systems in ways that are not sustainable, then we're harming the long-term health and vitality of our communities. So the goal, from a planning perspective, is to make sure that when we make decisions today, that we're not just thinking about what's happening today, but that we're making sure that our communities are gonna be healthy into the future, and so those people who follow us will be thankful for the things that we have done, the thoughtfulness that we've engaged in, to make sure that we're leaving communities that are healthy and sound and have a lot of vitality. If I could just mention one other thing, there was some concern about whether or not this takes over local planning. We have a planning board here that does a very good job. This has no impact on what our local planning board does. And the state statute is very clear in terms of regional plans, and regional planning has a role, local plans have their role as well. This is not adding another level of bureaucracy, it won't affect what the city of Rochester decides to do in terms of its master plans, things of that sort.
Are you, Councilor Keats? Okay. No questions for Mr. Orban, so go ahead, Councilor Keats.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, on a limited level, you might think about coast bus. It's not a service that probably any of us in this community use, because we all have our fancy back in the drive or whatever, like the girl or we might go. But there are a lot of folks in this community who don't own vehicles. They need them to get to work, they need buses to get to work, or they need to get shopping, or things like that. That's, that's a very small idea of what this would involve. I think one of them being a minority, some of us collect different things. Car, some folks collect guns. Some people look at the old brick factories, and they're really interested. And I think one of the things that's being planned is a trip across the whole state of New Hampshire and the whole state of Maine. Folks that are interested in looking at mills and studying mills. And they'll be involved with the restaurants along the way. The mills will do the cultural portion of this thing, the restaurants would be some of the atmosphere of folks studying some of the ends and what have you. It'll be, it'll be that kind of a thing planned. That, no, the planning, I mean, without a planning commission, you have to do something like that. That's not something your local travel agency is gonna pull together. So those, I mean, those kinds of things should have happened in your town. It's fine, it's not taking over your local planning and saying, "Folks, it's gonna only be this size, and they don't want to stay," whatever. Nothing to do with that at all. I mean, since when do you plan, it becomes a bad, a bad thing? I mean, wouldn't you want to sit down with the Department of Transportation with the Department of Employment Security? I mean, I just don't understand what's being done here. It doesn't make any sense, but it makes sense, and I think we ought to move this one to my point.
All right, to that point now, at this time, the motion on the floor is to postpone for the August workshop. But I would encourage the council at this point, rather than keep dialoguing this issue any further, let's vote on the motion. If you're okay with postponing until August, if you're gonna vote in favor, if you wish to vote against that and possibly take action tonight, voting it down or up one way or another, but then you would have to defeat this motion in order to do so tonight. Is it clear on that? Councilor Eadweard?
Make sure that... Yes, vote would be...
A yes vote, I want to postpone until the August workshop. A no vote would defeat the motion to postpone, it would be a double fraction. Okay, seeing you on the discussion. All those in favor of postponing for the August workshop, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can I have a show of hands, please? All those in favor of postponement till August, please raise your hand. Opposed? I just postponed for the, this workshop, I vote seven to six. Councilor Eadweard?
Well, I look at this, the same thing that happened a year or so ago. For example, myself and my family own better than a mile along the river. Without any confrontation among family members, we cannot use, utilize any land 225 to 250 feet of that river anymore. You don't, that would run down our throats by people such as that or whatever.
Say it for her, please. Councilor Eadweard? Yeah, hang on, hang on, hang on, there.
You know, they don't like to hear that, because they don't own anything along that. You live in an apartment or something, it doesn't make a difference, but you own your own property, and somebody takes your property, but when you get your tax bill, you don't have a direction on any tax bill, but you're on land, you're...
Councilor Keats, I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
I don't want to point out, Councilor Lumbour, that that was the state legislation that's passed, and nothing to do with that at all.
I don't want to get down that... So, Councilor Barney?
What more are we gonna know in August? What more is, so what, where are we gonna get more?
It's, the, when that motion has already passed...
No, I understand, just ask a question. We're gonna have a presentation in August, what is it gonna have?
You really want to watch it? It could have been asked, but that, that is true. I hope you have a better way...
Are you looking for Mr. Orban to provide you with answers to what has been raised? Mr. Eadweard, can't forget, can't...
Maybe you should be the square of your place. That's your own nation that we belong to.
That mission, right?
All right, but I think, if I may...
Go ahead, Councilor Barney.
I think this is the work that I'm on with, I mean, he, and you remember, Sam, you remember?
Yes.
And you could also, you know, activate.
Very good. Anyways, all businesses now dispense up, we will move on to item 13, new business, and we will start with, A, approval of motor vehicle junkyard and junkyard vehicle renewals. It contains a motion to approve. Motion has been made and seconded to approve. All those, any discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Abolish motion. Yeah, moving on to item D, it contains a motion to...
You're a disgrace to this community. You're a communist. Laugh all you want, you're a disgrace. You did it for your money.
A disgrace in part of this particular item to your opponent. For those of you who are leaving, if you could just take your conversations outside. Thank you. All right, for those catching up now, Councilor Lachapal has refused himself in deciding a conflict with interest. And same motion, read by title only for first time.
No.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, read by title only for first time. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution accepting and appropriating excess host community fees for FY 2012. This is in the amount of $77,974.09. Adoption of this resolution or appropriated to the Economic Development Fund. As I margin table to June 19th. Motion has been made to postpone, rather than...
Well, I think that'll need a second reading.
I don't think this one needs two. We need two to appropriate. We need any appropriation. Do you want just to stop? Yes. Well, okay, motion on the floor is to postpone until June 19th, or the second? Okay, second, go ahead, Councilor Barney.
The reason I want to do this is, we have yet to get through some of the most delicate budgets, particularly public work. Before we start transferring money into the underfunds, we ought to understand what the rest of our budget looks like. The other, one of the other two reasons is that we took money from the ED fund to purchase property that is now part of the tip. That tip is supposed to pay the fund back to some of them. And I understand that there's some reluctance to do that now because of what are already cost overruns in the construction projects, but nevertheless, tip is supposed to repay the ED fund order. The other reason is that, while you may think the budget feels comfortable and the tax rate is under the tax cap, it's really not, because if you change the $1.2 million on the paving to catch where it automated, we're gonna add 60 cents to the tax rate. So you're gonna have to find the money somewhere or cut back on paving. So we've got a budget that's gonna be challenging, and I don't think we should be transferring additional extra money into the ED fund over and above the $100,000 that we have to do that are obligated by, by organs. And on June 19th, if you've gone through this budget and that money is available, then I'm happy to transfer it, but I think at this point, it's...
Any further discussion? All right, seeing that, motion on the floor now is to postpone for June 19th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is postponed. Moving on now to item C, resolution accepting a donation from Federal Savings Bank. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, read by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a resolution accepting Federal Savings Bank donation for the Rochester Economic Development Department Economic Development Fund, and making a supplemental appropriation in connection therewith. This donation is in the amount of $1,500 to the city of Rochester for the purposes of funding the costs associated with a marketing project of the Rochester Economic Development Commission. It recalled that there was an investors meeting that was held several weeks ago, and the cost of this was supplied by, I don't think it's, tabled.
It's gonna be two reasons.
Move to the... Move to suspend the rules, read by title only for second time. Making motion as made and seconded to suspend the rules and read by title only for second time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution accepting Federal Savings Bank donation to the Rochester Economic Development Department Economic Development Fund, and making a supplemental appropriation in connection therewith. Motion made, seconded, adopted, any discussion? See now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item D, where this is a collective bargaining discussion. And a motion to read by title only, a resolution relative to the Rochester Municipal Employees Association... Motion made and seconded, read by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution approving costs, I'm sorry, resolution approving contract and cost items associated with, oppose City of Rochester multi-year collective bargaining agreement with the Rochester Municipal Employees Association. Motion has been made and seconded for adoption, any discussion? All votes have been requested and seconded. All right, any discussions?
Sure. Explain which agencies that is.
Yep. This is for the municipal employees. These are employees that are not department heads or managers within any city department, they are frontline workers. And this multi-year agreement is consistent with past multi-year agreements that we've adopted, that receives the concessions and health benefits, puts them on the same plan all of the other settled units have adopted. Any further discussions? All right, seeing that, roll call.
Councilor Boyd?
The like of who, yes.
Councilor Reed Erickson? Council Lumbour?
Yes.
Council Lachapal?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Arishow?
Yes.
Council Lumbour?
Yes.
Council Barney?
Yes.
Council Thor?
No.
Council Brand?
Yes.
Council Erby?
Yes.
Council Keats?
Yes.
Motion carries, twelve more. All right, the next item is a resolution for cost lines associated with the absentee work, all of them to read by title only for first time. Motion has been made and seconded, read by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Resolution approving contract and cost items associated with, oppose City of Rochester multi-year collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, absentee, local, 863. Next, a motion to adopt, first motion has been made and seconded for its adoption. Discussion before we go to roll call?
You don't need to read this off.
Clearly it needs twice, we need to adopt. So motion to adopt is up for any discussion.
Would you like to read the condition? Not reading.
You'd like to elaborate.
Summarize. Can you go quick?
I'll leave it for you. What's that? Now, if you have it. All right, on this particular collective bargaining agreement, this is with the Department of Public Works employees. This includes everybody that's not managing the station or at the public works facility. The details of this agreement that are noteworthy are the fact that it will take the DPW crews to the healthcare plan that all of the other employees are now on. They are on a different one, this brings them in line. After adoption of this particular bargaining unit, all City of Rochester employees will have the same healthcare plan, which is a healthcare plan that is lower cost to the city. It has a higher copay, it has prescription drug benefits that are consistent with that private sector, and it's more in line with where we see them to be. In addition, and of noteworthy mention is, this agreement removes the evergreen provision of the, of the Department of Public Works collective bargaining agreement. This means that there will be no more evergreen clauses in the City of Rochester with our collective bargaining unions. This is a very...